This is truly amazing to show that you all are engaged and involved and concerned about where you live. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you for coming out so that we can have this conversation. Um, I'm looking for Deborah. Deborah, where are you? Okay, so Deborah is back there. If you have not signed in with Deb, please make sure you see her because you will get this kind of information sent directly to your email and it'll be really easy to connect with you when there are pertinent information that needs to come out. So, I'm gonna ask all of our panelists, if you've just come in, you can have a seat. We've got the county here to show us what's going on as well as Judge Joe Donald, who will be representing the state side of this. He was on the selection committee as well as the conversation overall. So, if you have not met me, I'm Shantia Lewis, I'm the Alderwoman for this area. I will be around for a couple of minutes afterwards, however long it takes. If you want to talk, we can definitely do that, I would love to introduce myself. But otherwise, we're going to keep this flow moving. It will be a Q and A, as well as just giving you the content and the information. I am going to turn it over to the experts and we will have that conversation and that dialogue. So, I will turn it over to the judge. Judge Joe Donald, come on up, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Alderwoman. As you know, I'm Judge Joe Donald. I'm Milwaukee County Circuit Court Judge, I'm Branch 2, and I'm delighted to be here this evening. On my way over, I was kind of worried about, would there be a turnout? And walking into the room, I'm like, wow, I'm impressed. So, thank you for coming through the snow and the weather. I want to thank our hosts, Direct Supply. And I just want to speak briefly about how it is that we got to the point of where we're having this community conversation, because this is really an important conversation. So, I've been a judge now for 22 years. I've been, currently, I'm the presiding judge at the Juvenile Court Center. And I've handled all kinds of cases: homicide, sexual assault, civil cases, small claims, juvenile cases, family cases. So, I pretty much have seen just about every kind of case there is. I often joke with my family, I've been around the block so many times, I can do it with my eyes closed. And some days, depending on the case, I may close my eyes, but I always tell my litigants, I'm actually thinking and listening when that happens. But we are here because there was a recognition to close Lincoln Hills. So, I'm assuming that some of you have some background and are familiar with Lincoln Hills. It's a large congregate state juvenile corrections facility. It's located in Irma, Wisconsin. And everyone knows, and the research even bears this out, that large congregate facilities just don't work. They don't really have good outcomes. And the thing that I always try and stress and communicate, these are our kids. They will come back to the community. And so, if we're gonna spend the money and time and resources to try and address some of the issues that brought them into the criminal justice system, we should make sure that we're actually getting something for that money. In fact, as I often point out, the daily rate, the way, currently, it costs us close to $140,000 a year per kid at Lincoln Hills. So, we're spending the money, it's just a matter of, are we getting the result and the outcomes? Now, I was appointed by Governor Walker to serve on the state committee. And as part of that committee, we looked at a number of options that were available. And essentially, it comes down to looking at two types of facility: a state facility, which is for the serious juvenile offenders, and a county facility, which is a secure residential community facility. And you're gonna hear a lot of information about the county facility, because that's what this meeting is about. But I just want to touch a little bit on what the state facility is. So, the state facility would pretty much deal with those juveniles who are considered serious juvenile offenders. And that designation is based on the type of offense that that juvenile has committed. For example, carjacking is considered an offense in which a juvenile could be placed in corrections as a serious juvenile offender. The state committee, our charge was to look at various state-owned land to try and figure out a way to create smaller facilities that are more responsive to addressing the treatment needs. And one of the sites that was identified, which I'm sure some of you have heard about, is the DMV over on Mill Road, 74th and Mill Road, or 73rd and Mill Road. That state site, that state-owned land, it's an 11-acre site. Now, what I want to at least admit to you, and I'm gonna try and, depending on the questions, be completely honest and upfront. In my opinion, that site itself is problematic. It just really isn't enough size, based on what the state is looking at constructing. But, they was designated as a state-owned, it's state-owned land, and so that site was identified. The county is also looking at a number of sites, and you will hear more about that later with respect to the county site, and I will let them talk about that site. But what I want to stress, and what I hope that we have in this, tonight, in this discussion, in this conversation, that we actually keep an open mind, we listen, we look at the facts, and we look at what is really necessary and important as a community. Because we all share a responsibility, particularly with the young people, that actually bring themselves into the court's jurisdiction. And so, it is my hope and belief that with some open discussion, and that we recognize what the facts are, we look at the data, and we have a truly honest and open discussion. So, I don't want to take too much more time, but I will be available for questions. I will not be able to identify any particular case, but I can talk generally what happens to juveniles when they come into the system, why we try and treat them and address the issues that brought them into the system, and what it is that we can do better to hopefully make them more responsible and productive. I think we all share a desire and an interest in making sure that that happens. Because the young people that we are dealing with today in corrections, hopefully, I will get to the point where someday I will think about retirement, and I want to make sure that they're working and paying taxes and helping me in my retirement. So, I'm looking forward to participating in the discussion tonight. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Jo Myers, I'm the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services for Milwaukee County. I want to thank Alderwoman Lewis for allowing us this opportunity to talk to all of you tonight, and again, thank you for coming out on this snowy, cold evening. I also want to say thank you to Direct Supply for hosting us in this beautiful venue and feeding us and giving this opportunity to have a conversation. So, my role tonight is just to really turn it over to those people on my staff who are gonna be talking to you with some information. So, we have about, you know, 30 minutes or so to just present some information for you so that you have the facts. As Judge Donald said, our job really is to provide you with the most accurate information we can, and to answer any questions, listen to your concerns. It is our intent to be here and listen to your concerns, as well as answer as many questions as we possibly can. So, that is really our purpose tonight. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to my Deputy Director, David Mohammed, and Mark Mertens, who's the Administrator for the Division of Youth and Families, and they're going to present to you with some information, and then we'll open up to questions and comments.
And as he's coming, just really quickly, Minza is here, if anyone needs a translator, so you can see her for translation.
Good evening. My name is David Mohammed, as Mary Jo Myers said, I am the Deputy Director for the Department of Health and Human Services. Again, want to echo gratitude to Alderwoman Lewis for this opportunity. With me, I have Administrator Mark Mertens from the Division of Youth and Family Services. And I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes to talk about the plans at Milwaukee County with regards to Act 185. How many of us with a show of hands have heard of Act 185? Okay, so that's probably the best of most of the audiences that we've spoken to in terms of people who are aware of it. That's about maybe a third to a half of the audience that has heard about the legislation to close Lincoln Hills. You know, if you've read the headlines, you know about the investigations that have gone on there in terms of the treatment of youth there. And as the judge said, we know that it is not an appropriate place for youth rehabilitation. We believe in accountability, but we also believe that those are Milwaukee's youth, and they definitely need to be treated with a level of dignity that, and accountability that we believe we can accomplish here in Milwaukee County. Now, as I get used to the clicker, come on up, Mark. So, we want to just go through a couple of things in terms of what we're talking about. Now, our objective, and there was a lot of information that went out to the community, and we appreciate the opportunity to come before you on and just kind of clarify some things. Our objective really is to build a youth treatment facility that allows young people a second chance, not to go deeper into the system. A lot of the conversation, as the judge mentioned, focused on what the Department of Corrections plans were for serious youth offenders. To be clear, this facility that we are discussing, the center that we are proposing to be built, is one that will focus on treatment, that will focus on alternatives, that will focus on diversion, that will have a level of programming and educational and vocational resources to help rehabilitate and get young people back on track. But one thing that we definitely want to make clear is that we are not moving Lincoln Hills to Milwaukee. Lincoln Hills will be no more in 2021 as a youth facility. We are building something absolutely different that did not exist prior to the legislation Act 185, and that's the Secure Youth Residential Care Center. Now, Mark, if you want to speak to some of the distinction to that, I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you, David. Good evening, everybody. Just quickly, just maybe to satisfy my own curiosity, can we see a show of hands of everyone that you would consider yourselves residents of this neighborhood? Let's say you live within a couple of miles radius? Wow, that is great. Nice to see that the folks that live here are represented here. Really appreciate that, thanks for coming on. So, I can talk for a minute about what it is we intend to do. David mentioned that we're looking at establishing a treatment program, a whole different way of serving our youth, a way that's going to be more effective, a way that's going to move completely away from the really punitive practices of the past, and a way that we hope is going to help our youth develop the skills that they need to be better neighbors to all of you. So, your neighborhoods will be safer, you'll have, as Judge Donald mentioned, we'll have more people paying to pay for our retirements over time, or to care for us, or to just be good neighbors to all of you. So, what's the distinction between our plan and the state's plan? Well, Judge Donald mentioned it a little bit, that the state will be, the state facility will be serving youth that are committed to what's called the Serious Juvenile Offender Program. So, those youth that commit the most serious types of crimes against persons, they could be committed to that program. That program, the state's program, will also serve young people that are tried or convicted as adults. So, those youth that are under age 18, that are maybe have been waived into the adult court system, they could also be served at the state facility. The county facility will be for any other youth that commit also serious offenses. Our facility won't be for anyone that can be safely supervised in the community. It'll be for youth that need to be in a secure facility. So, people that commit serious offenses, but just not offenses that rise to the level of having been committed to the Serious Juvenile Offender Program. So, there's, you understand there's a distinction there. They are all the same youth, frankly. They're all youth that have needs, education needs, treatment needs, needs for meaningful relationships with positive pro-social adults in their lives, youth that need help in being redirected toward a more pro-social lifestyle. All of those, all of that, all youth would have in common in both facilities. The difference is the classification of the facilities, the type of security. Our program will not be a youth prison, it will be a correctional facility, or, sorry, it will be a treatment facility, it will not be a correctional facility. And it will be a secure facility, though. So, it will be, it'll have an exterior that is secure, so that youth can't come and go, they can't leave the facility. They will be there to receive treatment within the facility.
Now, in the news lately, there's been a lot of questions about the timeline with regards to the new governor and the new administration at the state. There has been a lot of conversation that timeline might change to six months to two years. Our course of action is staying committed. We believe Lincoln Hills should be closed by 2021, and that there should be an alternative closer to the youth and their families that largely are from Milwaukee County. But beyond a facility, beyond a center, we really are looking at what happens on the front end when a young person gets in trouble. The question that looms is, does a young person have to get in trouble to get help and to get any type of support in the community? We believe no. And with the Division of Youth and Family Services, we're looking heavily at prevention alternatives, at diversion alternatives, to work with our justice system partners to make sure that youth on the front end have options that exist with our community partners, but also while they are in the proposed youth center. Now, I want to go to this slide right here that shows really the continuum of care that currently exists. And Mark, if you want to speak a little bit briefly to that, and then we'll go on to talk about other hosts.
Sure, David. I realize this is probably a little bit hard to read, but what it represents really is what it will take to be successful, and that really is about partners. It's about working with the local community, it's about working with policymakers, it's about working closely with the court system, with other systems like Child Protective Services and law enforcement. It's about working with the behavioral health system, so that we create a system that's more integrated, where people are more, working together more collaboratively, that we have an overarching plan about what it means to really give our youth what we think is going to be effective, to keep them from coming back, to get out of that pipeline from the schools to the juvenile system, to eventually our adult prisons. We want to change that trajectory for our youth. We want to change it so that they can be in a better place, where they can be, as I said, good neighbors, people that are safe and reliable in our communities. So, part of that, part of how we're framing this, and how we're trying to communicate it out, is we started an initiative called Project Rise. And Project Rise is really about all of those elements that we're talking about, all the things that we think need to be different in the juvenile justice system in order to make it better for our youth. So, things like trying to reduce racial disparities in the system. We're working very hard with some of our community partners, some of them that are here tonight, to look at different ways to keep our youth from entering the juvenile justice system, and then from penetrating further into the system. Especially, we all know, and sadly, that black and brown youth are way overrepresented in our system. So, we're looking for ways to reduce that overrepresentation. We're calling on national partners to work with us, like the Annie Casey Foundation, the Robert F. Kennedy National Resource Center for Juvenile Justice, partners in Columbia University, partners in the state, in Washington DC, that work for the Youth Rehabilitative Services there. We're calling on people in Washington State that are experts in clinical treatment. All of these partners, we're trying to bring together to develop the best possible model for how we can treat our kids. And we're looking to make the new facility that we, through Act 185, a place where we can bring all of those things together and demonstrate that we can do it a whole lot better, we can be much more successful for our youth.
So, an example of our commitment in terms of trying to do something different. How many of you all have seen this building on 32nd and Hampton? Originally, it was spoken of as Bishop's Creek, it's now called Bakari House, and it's run in a partnership with Wisconsin Community Services, WCS. This is a non-secure youth transitional facility that exists in the community, it's a residential care center that is in the community. What we mean by non-secure, the doors are locked, you know, obviously, people have locks on their doors when they reside there, but it's staff-secured, it's staffed by people who are working with youth who are coming out of the system and being reintegrated back into the community, matched with employment opportunities, matched with therapeutic treatment and other types of clinical supports. But this already exists, and, you know, while we just opened it in, what is it, December? There's four youth there currently. It's built as a 24-bed residential care center, and we believe that this is a good alternative to help reintegrate youth who are leaving the system and get them on a path to self-sufficiency. Now, to the points that Mark raised with regards to overrepresentation in the system, this is a map, obviously, of our county of Milwaukee, and when it comes to representation in Lincoln Hills, we're talking about on the low-level offense side of the spectrum, that is the type of youth that we're talking about from Milwaukee County, is 56 youth. And you can see by those dots, the neighborhoods that they come from. Now, we don't have time to get into a large discussion about sentencing disparities and ask ourselves whether youth in Franklin or other parts of the county are getting into trouble, we're sure they are too. But clearly, we see that something is happening where our young people have been caught in the system and have been getting in trouble and sent to a location four hours away, where there's a lack of support and a lack of accountability for their personal safety. And we definitely believe that we have a role to play in the alternative. What currently exists in the city and the county are those purple dots that you represent, that are represented right there. You see, one of them is Vell Phillips, another one is St. Charles and Lad Lake, we have Bakari House up there, and then we have, I believe, up there we have Job Corps and the DMV site. Most of us, just by, again, by a show of hands, how many of you heard that a facility was being put on the DMV site? Okay, so, that was not us, but just wanted to make sure that that point was clear. But Job Corps, the way that Job Corps exists, is very similar in the type of supports and things that we would be discussing, but Job Corps does not deal with system-involved youth. That's actually a stipulation of their programming. One thing that we are proposing, and I want to go to this right here, and Mark can chime in on this, is several models that we've looked at across the country as Mark spoke to. One took place in New York City, which had significant reductions in crime, in violence, and in youth involved in the system. One approach that they had to break the prison pipeline was a strategy called Close to Home. And the decline in juvenile arrests after they instituted this was significant. You see there, the drops that they had, this was according to the New York City Police Department, 52% in just several years after they instituted this. I believe this began in 2011, and by 2014, they had seen significant decreases of youth who were system-involved. And Close to Home was a model that they had young people living in transitional-type living care facilities, treatment-type facilities that looked like campuses, there was green space, there was nature, there was a way for them to participate in educational and vocational training, as well as clinical resources as well in the facility, and it showed promise. The next one was in Washington DC, and there were actually several people from our staff, our team, and some of the community partners, even folks at the state, who visited another location called New Beginnings. And New Beginnings is significant because it exists as a campus-type of center for youth coming out of the system. They had a circumstance very similar to Lincoln Hills, in fact, theirs was called Oak Hills. And Oak Hills had a whole lot of abuses and had a lot of investigations going on as well. And so, they did something radically different. They revamped their juvenile justice model, they took out any of those practices that lent themselves to abuse, the use of pepper spray and the like. And they built that location in partnership with a community re-engagement center for when youth left the facility. When they first built it, they built it for 30 youth, and then at a certain point, as the numbers went down, it became a facility for just nine youth who were between the ages of 10 to 17. They repurposed the facility for young adults and youth, 18 to 24, which is that age that gets lost most in the system. And that became a transitional facility for them, and also for their families to receive treatment, to receive family-based support, as well as vocational training in partnership with their private industries within the city. There was a great deal of reductions in recidivism. It went from 45% recidivating in 2018 to 29% in 2011. I want to show you just a couple of things about how it looks. The idea of giving young people dignity in a space when they're probably at the lowest point that they could be in their life, is one that we are committed to. We do not want something that looks correctional. As you can see by the entryway, trying to click back, but you all saw that that front entrance did not look ominous, or threatening, or any of that, but it was secure. There were fences and everything that protect the public from anyone who would attempt to do something. But ultimately, it was something done in a way that did not compromise safety and security while at the same time serving youth effectively. Mark, did you have anything to add about New Beginnings?
Just a couple of things to add to that. David mentioned Oak Hills and the similarities with Lincoln Hills. There are also similarities with New York City. New York City looked, in some ways, a lot like Milwaukee back before 2011, when they started Close to Home. They had, most of their youth, those youth that needed to be in a secure setting, were sent upstate to large institutions that looked and felt a lot like Lincoln Hills. And those facilities, just like Oak Hills, and just like probably 25 other facilities around the country that were just like that, have failed for the same reasons. And that's that youth weren't treated well there, and there was inadequate programming and inadequate education. So, youth were coming out more angry because of the way they were treated, and without any skills or education to sort of try to abate any of that anger. So, it actually made things worse. And you can see, and I think David's gonna talk, David did talk about New York City as well. You can see that when you're intentional about doing it right, and treating our youth with respect, and providing them with the right types of programming and the right types of educational opportunities, what a difference we can make for our community. So, let me talk a little bit about that model, and what we think is the right way to do this. We mentioned Bakari House earlier. Bakari is sort of our model for how we're looking at doing this the right way, providing the right programming. We've done a lot of work on Bakari in establishing a treatment model, that's what's called the Integrated Model, where you look at the youth as a whole, you look at their individual needs, you consider the things that have happened to them, their worldview, their culture, their strengths, and you start to develop plans that help them establish the kinds of skills that can build on those strengths versus trying to break them down and punish them. And you provide a robust educational program for them, and you can do remarkable things. We're working with a clinical psychologist named Henry Schmidt, who started the Integrated Treatment Program, Integrated Treatment Model in the state of Washington. Dr. Schmidt's been working with us in Bakari House, he's going to be working with us. He's going to be working with us.
Of mentors with credible messenger experience, lived experience, people who have been through it, who can actually walk alongside a young person and be there when they leave the system and make sure that they have a success plan. Aftercare is big for us. We want to make sure that those services and supports that they will encounter while there are there for them, waiting to support them as they leave. Now, our timeline for this, based upon the legislation, and this is, you know, changing in flux, obviously, with the change of administrations. But as we stated earlier, we are committed to an aggressive timeline of moving on this because of Lincoln Hills closing in 2021. We want to have something as a safe alternative for young people. The size and the gender of the facility, we've obviously looked at the amount of youth that are currently there. We do not want something big because if there is a large facility, people, you know, the judges will tend to send folks there. We want to make sure, you know, it's like they say in the movies, if you build it, they will come. We want to make sure that the continuum of care is stronger so that there is more diversion alternatives in addition to a secure facility for young people on the front end of the system. The cost, oftentimes, people will ask about, well, what about Vell Phillips? The cost of tearing that down, building that back up would grossly exceed what the state is giving counties to do this. And so, it is much cheaper to build new. And then, obviously, you have much more control about the type of culture and climate that you have in a facility that has a different mentality. Now, to the reason that most of us are here tonight. In terms of site selection, we were looking for locations that had at least five or more acres. As you saw, the young people are from Milwaukee. We believe that the facility should be in Milwaukee. It helps keep the programming accountable. It keeps the outcomes, you know, trackable by the community and make sure that they have the type of support that can relate to them, that's culturally competent, that can serve them and their families. We believe it should be near public transportation. Families should be able to take a bus, a city bus, not a bus to go four hours away. We believe that environmental conditions are critical. We want it to be safe for young people. We're not just looking to plop something down somewhere, but actually have it be well-thought-out. Proximity to community resources is critical. As well as, we've looked and done an inventory of both city and county land and state land. We've looked at over 40 different locations for this and have settled on one, which is 6101 West Mill Road, as well as 6600 North Tetonia Avenue. Obviously, they both have their pros and their cons. But we believe that they both meet the criterion that we've looked at and looked carefully for. The timeline that I stated earlier, much of this work is ongoing, but we are looking to have much of the rendering and those types of things planned out, waiting to hear some more information from the state. But Milwaukee County has done our due diligence. And we want to make sure that we are as transparent a partner as possible to not only hear your concerns, but serve the youth of Milwaukee, all of our youth, even those who have made a decision or a circumstance has led them to some other type of environment. This is our commitment. We want to make sure that we are engaging with local businesses and sector leaders and stakeholders. We also want to make sure that we are focusing on reducing recidivism. We don't want to see young people go back. We want to make sure that they have the support they need to stay out. We want to support neighborhood safety and foster community and civic engagement. And as I stated earlier, aftercare is critical for us. We are looking at a continuum of care to support youth before ever even experiencing a law enforcement-type contact situation. And if they make a poor decision and they are in the system for accountability's sake, we want it to be rehabilitated rather than punitive. We want to involve families and community and support in that process because oftentimes, if you work with a young person, you can get only so far if you don't help the rest of the family's needs. And that's Milwaukee County and DHHS's commitment. And utilizing culturally responsive treatment and program models. I cannot emphasize this enough. I showed you the 56 up there. You can only guess that they come from black and brown families. And we want to make sure that we are doing things that are supportive to their development. Now, how you can help, if you are inclined to help. I hope this has dispelled some of the information that was out there. I hope this is some of it. But we definitely would like, if you could share the facts that we've laid out, the plan that we've put forward, take pictures of our presentation, take the video, share it, have it for public discussion. Ultimately, you know that the safest place for these young people is not four hours away where there is a lack of support for their rehabilitation. It's certainly closer to home, as we intended and proposed for you all tonight. So, thank you. We can open up for questions of ourselves, and I guess we'll take our seats at the table. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
There's a mic here and a mic over there.
Right here? Good evening. Lavis McCallum, thank you for the presentation. Good to see you out here. I work for Milwaukee County as deputy superintendent for the Children's Court Center for 34 years. Empowered than that, I was department head at the Children's. Lincoln Hills has just not been a bad place for hours from here. It's what we equipped the facility with the staff. You can have the same facility that you're trying to build here. And if you do not have the staff, your issue is going to be the same as Lincoln Hills. And how we got to the point where we were in Lincoln Hills, it was preferential treatment as far as staffing. They did substandards. It was who you know got you in here and then provide quality care for some other mother's child. And that's most important in all these facilities. We have so many people that like to advocate and show to the community all the great things. But once we get the structure complete, like we did at detention. We were the first, and I was one of them, that started with the American Correction Association. But if I didn't have the backing from my superiors in the Department of Social Service, they didn't want the American Corrections to come in. They don't want the youth law enforcement. These are all national, you know, facilities. And I just want to keep in mind that you got to get money from the national in order to have a very healthy situation here in Milwaukee. So, I say to you, Lincoln Hills wasn't bad. It's what the system put the staff in to take care of some other's child. And we have to keep that in mind because we have so many people in these facilities that's not equipped to provide that quality care to some other mother's child. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for that. And you raise, you raise a really excellent point, that it's not about the bricks and mortar, it's about the people. And it's about the training that they have, and it's about the support that they have and the commitment that they have to work with our youth. And that's the culture that we're trying to grow here in Milwaukee County and build upon. You know, I think we've had an excellent detention program. I think it's even better today. We've made remarkable gains in how we engage youth, how we engage families. Our use of force is almost nonexistent. Only in emergency situations do staff have to physically separate youth or move youth. And we've done remarkable things about reducing that, reducing injuries to staff, reducing injuries to youth. And it's because of our people and because of our culture and the training that we're implementing around what's the best way to work with youth. And that, we want to carry that throughout our system, through Bakari House, through the new program when it's built and when our youth moved there in 2021. You raise an excellent point. It is about the people, and we aim to find and train and support the best people.
Hi. I have a comment over here on this side. Actually, I have two comments. One is, I'm wondering if you're going to place this at 6101 West Mill, possibly? That actually is Alderman Chevy Chase's district. No one, he hasn't even been notified about this. And so, none of the people in his district, I talked to him last week, and he said he didn't send out a letter because he didn't even hear about this yet. My other comment is, I think all of us would like to see the youth rehabilitated, but isn't there a possibility of locating this facility in an area that is not residential? Because right now, we all know, anyone who looks and reads the facts here in Milwaukee, that even though you're talking about making smaller facilities, every prison facility in the state of Wisconsin is overcrowded, extremely overcrowded. Not one of them has less people in it than the capacity. So, what's going to help us to believe that that same thing wouldn't happen here?
Well, I'm not sure I can address the location sites specifically. But we've looked at over 40 locations. We've worked closely with our facilities department, with architects, with real estate experts. We've looked at, as all the things David mentioned about what's, where would the optimal location be, given who the youth and the families are that we're working with? And those are the two sites that came up as the best possibilities for us. As far as overcrowding, actually, placements in youth corrections have been going down steadily over the last several years. If you recall, we used to have two boys correctional facilities years ago. We had Ethan Allen and we had Lincoln Hills. And the populations had gone down so steadily that it was necessary to close one or the other. Governor Walker decided to close Ethan Allen. And the population still continued to decline. Today, there's just over 100 youth at Lincoln Hills. And there was a day when there was well over 300 youth in each of those facilities. So, it's gone down steadily. Youth crime has gone down steadily. And we think that by providing better services and more effective services that are tied to effective practices and research, we can continue to bring that number down because fewer kids will be returning to those facilities over time.
I'll just let some other people bring up their points about it because I still don't think that that answers the question as to why we can't put it in an urban area but not in a residential location. There's plenty of property around that's closer than going to Lincoln Hills. It's in the Milwaukee area, but it's not in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
So, I don't have a better answer to that than, you know, we've looked at over 40 sites. Some of those sites were not in residential areas but were ruled out for various reasons, environmental reasons and so on. They didn't have the size necessary, or there were issues, you know, with the land that made it impossible. There are a number of reasons that sites were ruled out, but we looked diligently at over 40 sites.
So, are these the only two sites available?
So, let me just be clear with that because there are two separate facilities being proposed. So, there's the county one that these gentlemen are discussing. And then, there is a state one, which houses a different category of young people. And that is the one that is the DMV. So, unfortunately, we don't have our state representatives or anyone from the office unless they're in the mix. Are they here? Okay. So, unfortunately, they're not here, but Judge Joe Donald can try his best to answer because he was a part of, I'm sorry, Judge, I'm putting you on the spot.
That's all right, Alderman. You can go on the spot, I can take it.
So, because he was a part of the process. So, those are two separate. So, the county are identifying two parcels. And then, the state has identified the DMV on 73rd and Mill Road. So, just wanted to remind people that there's two separate facilities. Two. Yes, one county and one state.
My question was, is there any other facilities or locations that you're looking at for the county?
No. No, just the two, just the two we put out.
Just those two that you have put out? Is that a done deal? It's going to be one or the other?
No, no, there's an entire process with that as well. But I'd say the 40 sites I want to speak to in terms of some of those locations, flood plain, toxicology reports, not safe to build. This is what was settled on, based upon the requirements for the youth center that we wanted them.
My name is Margaret Thorne. I live in this neighborhood, and I've lived here all my life. And Judge, I've been in your courtroom having to face a criminal that burglarized my house. And that man took stuff from me. And I was very clear, that man gave me more than what he took. He gave me stress, he gave me anxiety, and he gave me fear. And that I can't get rid of. That was five years ago, Judge, and I haven't forgotten. You let that man walk, and your response was, there are too many black men in the system. I don't care if he's white, I don't care if you're black. I'm sorry, if you commit the crime, you do the time. And I understand, you need rehabilitation, I get it. But I don't need it in my neighborhood.
All the ones who voice, I just want to just briefly acknowledge Ms. Thorne. And I can't really talk about the particulars of the case, as I indicated, since I'm the judge on the case, and I'm not really sure, you know, if there are any appellate issues or anything where the case would come back. But I know that whatever was said in court, there's a record of it. And, you know, that's a record that can be obtained. I try and be fair to everyone that appears in front of me, defendant, litigants, victims, witnesses. I've been the judge now for 22 years. So, I've seen a lot of different cases. So, I just want to acknowledge and I recognize that, you know, whenever you're a victim of crime, it does hurt. There are things that are taken that can never be given back. I understand that. And I'm certain that whatever I said at the sentencing, I took all those factors into account. I try and do it in every case. So, but I just wanted to acknowledge your pain, I feel it.
I have a question. Is the state facility already a done deal?
The committee made a recommendation. So, there is no final decision, no done deal. It was only a committee's recommendation.
Again, getting back to the other question, why so close to houses in the neighborhood? I mean, why don't you put like somewhere in the valley next to Powhatanie or out in the northwest corner up there next to?
So, Act 185 limited the actual sites that the committee could look at in terms of what the state facility was, where it was supposed to be. I understand the concern about being in a residential neighborhood. But I'm also aware of how we treat people. And it's unfortunate that we've gotten to the point as a community that we are afraid of our own kids. So, I think about this every day. What is it that we can do as a community so that we can start healing as opposed to isolating and locking up? Now, the fact that it is in a residential neighborhood, these kids come back to this neighborhood. They come back to the community. So, whether they're locked up or on GPS or just walking around or AWOL or whatever, they're in our community. So, this is a bigger problem as to where, more than just where we're going to sort of confine people. Because we cannot, and I saw some law enforcement people here earlier, we cannot arrest our way out of this situation.
Would you want this facility next to your house?
Sir, I live in the city of Milwaukee. I've lived here my entire life. I've had relatives go to prison. I've had relatives who have been killed in this city. I am here, and I'm going to continue to remain here to make sure that we, as a community, address this problem.
That's not answering my question.
Born and raised here in Milwaukee, this is my community. These are my kids. These are my kids, and as soon as we start looking at them as our kids, we're not gonna solve this problem. And I don't, I don't care how big a fence or wall you wanna build. So I, I, I'm here to kinda answer questions. I understand that people are upset. That's how the legislative process works.
Fred Royal, President and double ACP Milwaukee branch, also a member of this, uh, committee, this, uh, Juvenile Justice Review Committee. We do have, uh, correctional facilities in neighborhoods. One is the Phil, uh, Fillmore's Channing Correctional Facility on Fond du Lac Avenue, and the other one is the Women's Correctional Facility on Fourth and Keith. The Beta Foundation found that it was a safe enough environment to invest over sixty million dollars in their new facility in that area, right around the corner. So if your fear is that somebody is going to leave that facility and break into your homes, that's that misconception. That's that Willie Horton fear mongering. If anything, this brings opportunities for procurement, for work, for construction in your area to ameliorate some of the low income, some of the poverty that these children come from. Maybe they'll get a job on the construction site to avert them from going into the juvenile justice system. We have a whole lack of opportunity. We have forty years of poverty rates in this city, over twenty-six percent. We have the highest rate of blackmail incarceration due to nonviolent drug offenses. The same amount of marijuana is used by European Americans as African Americans, but we're convicted and incarcerated as a high, at a higher rate. If you saw a fifty percent reduction in opioid deaths, you would cheer on that model. They just showed you a four, a, a forty percent reduction in incarceration youth through this model, and you're still opposed to it.
So if I could, um, give you some more information. As I stated, our job, I'm Mary Jo Myers again, Director of Department of Health and Human Services, so I can talk to you related to the Milwaukee County Plan. Um, our job is to hear you out, our job is to listen to your concerns, but our job is also to provide you with the best accurate information as possible. So, you know, I'm starting to hear us talking about correctional institution when in reality, what we're proposing to you is that we build a secure youth center that provides treatment, vocational opportunities, education. As you saw in the slide presentation, our commitment is to, um, have a school campus-like setting, um, that offers security. So it will have a secure perimeter, it'll also have a one to five ratio of staff, highly trained, highly supported, to the point that was made earlier, that it really is about the people that engage. And the other thing I'd like to talk to you about is, prior to me taking this job about a year ago, I worked my entire thirty-four years for Milwaukee County, working with kids who are in systems. The stories I could tell would make most of you cry, and, and until we, um, think about what helps kids heal are adults, caring adults, adults who wanna step forward, reach out, and be part of their lives to help them to have a better future. So when we talk about Project Rise, it's really a way for us to think about better futures for our children. And so we'll continue to provide you with as much information as possible. The sites we're talking about, um, while they may be close to residents, are not on top of residence. And so we just wanna keep talking about what's factual, what's not, and then ask for your commitment as a caring adult, as someone who has children, most likely yourselves. Uh, and, you know, by the grace of God, go I, that, you know, when our children may or may not end up in a correctional facility, one never knows, because we don't know what the outside forces or other adults who are around our children may influence them. We know that by locking kids up, we make angrier children who turn out to be angry adults, and it's not working. And we are spending a ton of money on a lack of success here. So we're just simply asking you to think about another way of doing business and to have successful outcomes for our kids.
Good evening. Mine's a town with the Long Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a board member of the Haven Woods Economic Development Corporation. I don't think, in respect to all of you here tonight, I don't think any of us here tonight are, are here with the notion that we don't support, um, the changing the trajectory of our youth, right, our troubled youth. I don't think that's the issue here at hand. But my question, especially in the realm that I work in, in economic development, and you've talked about this, uh, the two gentlemen on stage, it's, have we done our due diligence on the economic impact for this community? And we're not even just talking about the, the county facility, right? We're also talking about the state facility that potentially could move in right next door. It's two facilities that greatly could impact negatively at an economic level, our residents, our businesses, our community organizations, all of us who have really worked hard to raise up these communities. And we talked earlier, I had the honor of, uh, speaking with Fred Royal earlier, at a shared prosperity event discussion. And Milwaukee, we have such huge economic disparities amongst our minority communities, and yet this is one community that we're right at that cusp of raising up. And so I just implore that you all do due diligence around what could be the economic impact that will touch these communities with the two facilities that are coming, that are being proposed into this, uh, region. And I would ask too, have we started to do that sort of due diligence?
Definitely be thankful for that comment. On the county side, 'cause again, I can't speak for the state, but what we've committed to doing is in terms of our contracting, in terms of hiring, making sure that we are, um, being cognizant of hiring diverse workforces, hiring from targeted zip codes, to make sure that, uh, people who have not had a, a traditional opportunity will be a part of this process. And then in addition to that, when the center is built, to make sure that the contracting is, is reflective of the population that is being served as well. So those are the things that we've taken into consideration. We've definitely thought about that and had internal discourse about it. Um, I, I would ask to see what the impact has been in Wauwatosa, where Val Phillips has been for, for quite some time, um, and there's a, a great deal of development in that area as well. So, you know, there, there's definitely pros and cons. Uh, again, I can't speak for the state, but we have done our, our research on the county side.
My name is Phyllis Wiggins, and I am a Desert Storm era veteran. Um, this is a very emotional issue for me. Um, I lived downtown for a long time. I moved out here because it was one, quiet and two, safe. Um, I have no desire to have either of these facilities built in my quote "safe" community, which is one of the criteria you chose to build in here. I also want to point out that I have no intention of staying here if that happens. And there will be many people like me who will leave this community and affect its economics, affect its quote "safety." All the reasons you're choosing this community for are the reasons we don't want it here. Um, I would not be shamed into saying every child is my child. It's not true. I, at twelve years old, decided I would have no children. So I have no children. Every child in this community is not my child. I feel no responsibility or guilt about changing your prisoners. Okay, so now, you can think what you think, you can think about me what you think. I went to war, I fought for the freedom of this country, and I would not be shamed into assuming your problem is my problem.
Hello, my name is Kia. My family lives in the area. I do disability for my work. Half of my cases are mental health, so I totally understand Project Rise and its goals. However, I do want to point out that there's a large community of home people who live in this area. In just the five-three-two-two-three area code, or zip code, I found on the census that there's at least two thousand home people and families who live in this area. And that's not even including, um, the other surrounding areas. Now, if you don't know, next to the DMV, there's a, um, market. It's a huge market and defense center used by the home people and owned by one of the people who's here today. And this event center and market is the biggest one in the area. Everybody goes there to get their groceries. Everybody goes there to rent out that space. Now, if you go into that space and you walk out of that building, you'll see the prison that's put there. So that place is rented out every single weekend for events. Everybody goes there for their birthdays, everybody goes there to do their celebrations. But who would want to go there and look across the fence and see in the back there that there's a correctional facility standing there? It's gonna negatively affect business, I believe, that comes there. Um, that's concerning for all the home community that live in this area. Um, I know a lot of them are older, they don't know English, but they are concerned. Um, and I'd like to just let you guys know, that's gonna impact business that's in that area. The vendors, a lot of them that I've spoken to about this new correctional facility that's gonna be there right next door, literally, they're all, you know, not sure what's gonna be happening. I understand one of the points here, that, um, public transportation is why the location was chosen, but do we want that kind of traffic coming in and out and affecting our business? That's what I wanted to point out. Now, I also wanna know, I guess this is a question for both the state and county, how soon, what is the timeline for deciding where these, uh, whether or not these locations will be definite? You guys said you guys wanna move it pretty quickly here, because Lincoln Hills will be closing by twenty-twenty-one. Does that mean building will start next year? And does that mean that by the end of, you know, summer, the location is gonna be picked out? How soon will we know?
Thank you. I can, I can tell you that is, uh, as you've, as you saw in the presentation, for the, the county program, there's a pretty steep, uh, timeline here that we, if we're going to successfully open a facility by, um, January of twenty-twenty-one, uh, there's a, there's an awful lot that has to be done. So it is, it is on a very ambitious, uh, timeframe to get that accomplished. We haven't set a specific date about when we need to decide on the site, but, uh, as you can well imagine, um, by summertime, uh, we'll be needing to begin some construction, wherever it happens to be.
Hi, my name is Mary Lockett, and I've lived in this area. I was brought up-
Can you answer the question?
I'm not sure I've completely heard the question. Can, can-
So you're not listening?
I'm listening, it's just very hard to hear up here. Can you re- repeat the question for me?
So they, no, I'll-
Your question.
Right, I'll answer, I'll answer the-
If anyone can repeat-
I'll answer the question. If it's okay, I'll answer the question. With respect to the timeline on when the state site will be developed, there is no timeline. There's a deadline that was set for closing Lincoln Hills, but there is no timeline for the building and constructing the state site. The committee that I was on only made a recommendation as to the location. So, uh, at this point, it's still up to the state legislators and the governor's office to kinda figure out when exactly that's going to happen. Now, the fact that that still needs to happen, it may impact the county facility, but I can tell you this, knowing all the work that they've put in, that the county facility, they're moving forward with trying to locate a site and build a facility. So, uh, and that's why we're here having this discussion. So, um, that's the best answer I can give you.
So what about the part where it says, uh, she, she mentioned that it's gonna hurt business in that area, this area, our community? Does that not mean anything to you guys?
Well, alright, so I'm not really sure how to answer that. I can say that, uh-
So we want to help our youth, yes?
Right, right.
But we are willing to sacrifice business, vendors, everything?
So, so, alright, look, look, I, right, let, let, let me make this, look at it from this perspective. Every state correctional facility that I've visited, and it's required as part of being an elected judge, that I go and visit these facilities, 'cause I need to go look at where I'm sending people. Every time I go to one, I see employees, I see, you know, workers, guards, people who have to buy food, I see people who are spending money. In fact, most times, when I pull into the employee parking lot, I see a lot of brand-new trucks with trailer hitches. So, right, right, I, you know- Well, I, I'm just telling you what I see, sir. So what, what is reality? Then, but let's get the facts. Let's get the facts.
I own a business here, I own a million dollars worth of property, this will not help our business, and the economic impact will be dramatic on us and home.
That's not true. That's not true. That's not true. That's not true. That's fear mongering. That's what that is, that's fear mongering. Alright, 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 let, let, let me, let me just interrupt, let me interrupt. Let me interrupt, let me interrupt. That's not true. Okay, alright, look, look. I don't want this, I don't want, I don't want this to get any worse, okay? So what I want, what I need to hear, what I need to hear is all the different perspectives. I wanna get the facts, I wanna get, I wanna hear what the community has to say, because I, I live in the community. So, so let me, let, let me just, let's suggest that everyone give a chance to voice their opinion. I was trying to answer a question, a question that I personally don't have the facts to, but I was trying to answer the question, because that's what the gentleman wanted. Now, I apologize for not having the facts. I didn't do an economic impact on what this facility will do to the community. I would hope that the state would do that, but I don't know. So that's all I can do, is answer the question the best I can.
And I think we need to just, if someone's at the mic, respect that person at the mic. Go, Mary.
Okay, my name is Mary Lockett, and I've lived in this area for twenty-five years. I've raised a child in this area, and when I moved here, I considered it safe, I considered it quiet. Over the years, over the decades, this area has gone through a lot of changes, a lot of economic changes, there've been people coming and going. I understand what you're trying to do, believe me, I do. However, this neighborhood cannot take that hit. If you, if that facility goes up, a lot of things are gonna happen. People are gonna move, we're gonna have a lot of empty houses, we're gonna have more businesses leave this area. We cannot afford that. And I guess, at the very least, what I would suggest you do, and bring it back to us, is have both your facility and the state facility do an economic development analysis to see how this is going to impact us. We can take it up from there, but we don't have enough information to say, "Yes, we agree with you." We don't have enough information. You need to do that impact analysis and tell us how it's gonna impact us, and there should be people from this community on that board that does this analysis. That's all I ask.
My name is Logan. I lived like two blocks away from Sixtieth and, uh, Mill Road right here. I have a couple, uh, two question parts. The first part is, you, you talked a lot about, uh, it's gonna be a small, smaller facility, but you- you did not give a number in terms of how many beds that is. You're saying that's smaller, smaller, but you need five acres of land to develop it. So what is the number? Are we looking at ten, are we looking at fifty, one hundred? What is the number?
So we have been working with Annie Casey to do what they call right sizing because many communities build too big rather than too small. You would think the opposite, that they generally build too big. So where we've landed right now, and we may even be able to go smaller, is we're looking at forty max and we may be able to go smaller.
You also mentioned that these are our kids and they are probably our kids in our neighborhood. But I wanted to share with you that at front of county point of view, I mean, I live very close to Clova Newt and during the summertime, there's kids that come and play basketball and like all the playground is not even good. The basketball not even in place. The sidewalk, like today, are not even plowed and you talk about these young kids going to go through this, coming back to this community. You put so much money to build this new environment, what are the additional income, additional resource of money that you're going to put into the resident around here in terms of fixing the housing, in terms of fixing the parks? I was at Dreska today, Clutch Park, because my kids want to go sliding. In U County Park, you know, you have the bathroom open and the sidewalk was not even plowed. I mean, that to me is ridiculous that you're saying that these are our kids, but you don't even take care of the environment that they are going to come back into here. And you always do what you want because you want to make money for, for the big company. But in terms of our residents, you never take cares of the property that benefit the city and the resident here. So how many times we have to tell you to cut the grass? How many times we have to say, open the bathroom so that people playing basketball doesn't have to pee outside? I saw that with my own eyes. And that to me is like ridiculous because you said they're going through this program, they're coming back out and now they're playing basketball and they have no place to pee but to pee outside. That's, I don't know what you're saying, if you're putting so much money into this piece here, why don't you put down millions of dollars into making this resident here more welcoming so that people can actually have places to go and play and not do crime stuff?